Alright, so welcome to the 30th meeting of the Liquor Commission. When addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly for the reporter. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes to approve.
Yes Chair, motion to approve the minutes of the 27th meeting. As previously circulated.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of the 27th meeting as previously circulated. All those in favor? Roll please, Ms. Harai.
Uh, Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye. Um, motion has been carried. Okay, we're going into public hearing, calling agenda item number one. Application number 21-22423 from Punch-Out! Incorporated. Mr. Lee? Are you here?
Here, let's see. Must be muted again.
Oh, there you go.
You're muted though.
Uh, let's see.
Uh oh.
Oh, the host unmuted me. Okay, that's... Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yes, good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the Honorable Liquor Commission. Ms. Harai, James HQ Lee, appearing for Punch-Out! Inc. I believe on Zoom with me is, uh, Ms. Alisa Wu, the consultant who did the mail-out and affidavit.
Okay, Ms. Harai.
Uh, thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters and su- uh, zero letters and support, excuse me. Uh, in this instance, unfortunately, we're unable to report that the applicant has met requirements uh, due to the fact that the affidavit of mailing was incorrectly filled out.
Okay, so, um...
Um, I can't-
There's not a-
Yeah, i- in terms of options, um, typically it would be, at the, at one end would be cancellation of the public hearing and applicant gets to redo the, the mail-out and file his affidavit of mailing. In other similar circumstances like this, the commission has permitted the applicant to file a corrected, uh, affidavit of mailing. We would have to, uh, continue the matter for two weeks because that affidavit needs to be on file with us for seven business days. Uh, and they would also need to get that af- uh, the corrected affidavit of mailing to us. Um, ideally, uh, tomorrow. Uh, my understanding is licensing, uh, has confirmed that the mail-out was conducted. It's just that the affidavit of mailing was incorrectly filled out.
Okay, Mr. Lee? So you-
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
You've heard the options?
Yes, um, if they would find to continue, I believe that the, uh, uh, Ms. Wu has gone down to commission and has filed a corrected affidavit. So it'll be fine, we can continue the hearing for, uh, for two weeks.
Okay.
And public hearing kept open, please.
Motion to continue, agenda item number one, application number 21-22423 for two weeks with the public hearing kept open.
Second.
It moved in second to continue, agenda item number one, application number 21-22423 for two weeks with the public hearing kept open. All those in favor? Ms. Harai?
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Lee and Ms. Wu.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Itchou. Okay, we're calling, um, going into preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number two, transfer application number 21-22114 from Westside Asso- um, Westside LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Gota, appearing on behalf of Westside Associates LLC, uh, doing business as Westside Bar and Grill Capola. I don't see my client, Le Hua Paige, who is supposed to be on, I don't know if she's having difficulties. I am the authorized agent and can answer any questions the commission has. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report and applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Gota. Does the commission feel comfortable proceeding without the applicant?
Yeah, I think we do, Chair. Um, if there's no questions, Commissioners, I'll make a motion. Uh, motion to approve transfer application number 21-22114.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number 21-22114. All those in favor? Ms. Harai?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, the motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gota. Uh, going into agenda item number three, application number 21-22497 from the Pearl Golf Management LLC. Mr. Uyoka?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Ms. Harai, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Pearl Country Club. Also on the call is Mr. Edward Kagiyama, General Manager. First name E.D.W.A.R.D., last name K.A.G.E.Y.A.M.A. Um, at this time, we did receive the supplemental investigator's report. Uh, from investigator Sato, it was, um, pretty substantial. And given those concerns, we wanna, um, we wanna work on more time if possible to work on a solution. Uh, but, and we have to, we're still evaluating that. Um, we respectfully request a continuance for two weeks till February 25th.
Okay, um... Commissioners, do you have any questions or any comments?
Uh, yes, if I can comment, Mr. Uyoka, I appreciate the supplemental documents provided and I can just share with you, my inclination is to approve the application. But if you want to continue, that's your prerogative.
We would completely, if we could proceed today, we would love to do that.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Uyoka, I think we've reviewed your supplementals and I think that the commission, um, is comfortable at this time. Um, so, um, if there's no more questions, Commissioners, my motion is to approve application number 21-22497.
Second.
It moved in second to approve, application number 21-22497. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye. Motion has been carried, thank you, Mr. Uyoka.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Hey, calling agenda item number four, application number 21-22673 from KC Laguah Company Incorporated? I'm sorry, DBA Club Cleopatra.
Good afternoon, commission members, Brian Choi appearing on behalf of KC Laguah Company Inc., DBA Club Cleopatra.
Mr. Choi, can you, um, kindly spell your name for the reporter and also identify the gentleman next to you?
Yes. My name is Brian, B.R.I.A.N. Choi, C.H.O.Y., attorney for Mr. Anthony, A.N.T.H.O.N.Y. Han, H.A.N., who is seated to my meeting right. Do you have any questions that the commission, uh, may have with regard to the stock transfer app- application 21-22673? Thank you.
There's no questions, Commissioners, I'll make a motion. Uh, motion to approve stock transfer application number 21-22673.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the stock transfer application, application number 21-22673. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving into the request, agenda item number five, request number 20-21542 from Kyoya Hotels and Resorts.
Uh, yes Chair, uh, due to a possible conflict, I'm gonna have three questions just to get on.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, I mean, Commissioner Lee.
Good afternoon, commission members, Christopher St. Sure. And for the record, that is S.T. period space, S.U.R.E. Attorney, appearing on behalf of Kyoya Hotels and Resorts LP. Also with me, uh, on the, you know, for the record is Yasu Hiku, Hiko Ishikawa, who is the Vice President of Kyoya Hotels and Resorts LP.
Thank you, Mr. Sure. Commissioners, we have any concerns, comments?
And commission members, you know, I would like to issue a, you know, to make a comment on the investigative report. You know, there was two investigative reports, there was the original and the supplemental. So we appreciate Mr. Foster for issuing the supplemental, uh, to correct, uh, the party's name. So one of the, I think on the original report, the member was, the member was named incorrectly and it's now been changed to Kyoya Pacific Company. With respect to the opinion as to the timely filing, whether the notice was provided within 30 days of the partnership change, uh, we respectfully disagree, uh, with the opinion. And we'd ask the commission to take a look at, um, the rules regarding, um, computation of time. You know, we do acknowledge that the effective date of the partnership change was February 7th, 2020.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt, yeah, because this matter, uh, will be, uh, scheduled in, or, in a separate adjudication proceeding. So at this time, the, the commission cannot hear argument, but they will at that separate hearing. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you, Ms. Harai, for that point of order. Commissioners, we have any type of action?
Uh, if there's no questions, I'll, uh, make a motion. Motion to approve request number 20-21542.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number 20-21542. All those in favor?
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are now gonna call agenda, oh, we'll get, um, Commissioner Lee back, please. Okay, I see Commissioner Lee back will proceed. Um, calling agenda item number six, request number 21-22795 from PLC KBH Management Company, doing business as Kaimana Beach Hotel. Ms. O'Hira?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ms. O'Hira on behalf of applicant. Um, and with me is the bar manager, Ms. Jennifer Akril, her last name is spelled A.C.K.R.I.L.L.
Commissioners, we have any questions or concerns regarding this request?
If I could start, Ms. O'Hira, could you explain, um, what you're asking for and why you believe you, your client, um, should obtain the request, um, from the commission?
Yes, what the request is asking for is a waiver, you know, of the rule to, uh, prepare the drink before the customer. The request is being made because of, you know, just the current atmosphere and the need to, you know, have less people in a given space and to efficiently serve customers. We would like to pre-make the liquor portion of the drink, so it's not ready for consumption, it's just the liquor portions, um, and have those batched, so to speak, so that they're ready to be mixed subsequently when making a drink upon request by the customer. Mixing just the liquor portions does significantly reduce, um, the prep time. And given the current climate, um, we really think this would make service better for, you know, the very limited customers the establishment has currently, um, and also help the limited number of staff because with the need to reduce, you know, just people in general, we're also operating with less staff as well.
Okay, thank you, um, my specific concern I have is the, whether undue hardship has been demonstrated. And I hear the convenience factor but not hardship, and more importantly, undue hardship. If you could, um, elaborate on that.
Yes, the, the undue hardship, you know, some of it is just COVID, right? Everybody is facing a lot of hardship right now. But with this particular aspect, much like the other businesses that are having like their slushy machines and other, you know, other batching requests that we've seen, um, the undue hardship is not only with the ability to compete, um, in the space, but also just that people tend to be a little, how to say? You know, people would like expedient service and, and I know efficiency doesn't seem like an undue hardship, but in this particular climate, it really is because people are very on edge and they want to be able to, to get in and out. Um, and we'd love to accommodate that and we want to keep as much of our bar staff and restaurant staff employed as possible and that, you know, a portion of that unfortunately is selling, you know, selling beverages.
And could you, um, elaborate and maybe your client can, um, chime in? What is the current experience in terms of any factors that weigh towards undue hardship? For example, the efficiency you just described?
Yes, yeah, Jennifer can absolutely speak to that.
I think currently, the one thing that we can see is that the, um, the amount of time that we spend face-to-face with guests and being able to expeditiously, not just in front of the bar, but also within the restaurant itself, to keep the interaction to, uh, a limited 90 minutes. Um, in order to make that experience good for the guests and safe for everybody, the staff and the guests as well, to be able to get drinks out as fast as possible, um, get to them their drinks in their hands and they're able to have a relatively normal experience in an expeditious fashion.
You said 90 minutes, what were you referring to?
We try to keep our, um, our, our seating times, um, the, the dining window to a 90-minute window just to be able to, um, accommodate all of the guests that want to come and visit in a safe fashion, but also keep the interaction between the, the servers, the bartenders, the managers, the bussers, um, all of the folks that work here, keep that to a limited amount of time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, sorry, and then I think one thing, uh, that Jennifer might want to also talk about is people will just leave also, like if it, you know, if they feel like they can't be serviced quickly or efficiently, unfortunately, their, their reaction is to just go elsewhere.
Have you folks experienced that?
Yeah, we do have that, people, um, unfortunately, in the current climate, peoples' ton tensions are running a little bit high and so their, their ability to kind of temper their tempers, as it was, um, can be a little bit short, so they do tend to have like a little less ability to see the larger picture where maybe we're trying to be as expeditious as we can, but, um, the, the style of cocktails doesn't always tend to lean to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I have a question, um, just to be clear, is this request only pertaining to COVID period or you're asking for this request to be granted all the way? I mean, like, indefinitely?
I think we would want to do whatever the Commissioners are inclined to do, you know, we think this could be implemented on a, on a normal basis, you know, again, like I said, how people have like their slushy machines and their pre-mix, um, offerings. But I absolutely understand, from your point of view, how it may make sense to do it during COVID um, and then reevaluate, uh, when COVID is over and see if we still face the same challenges.
I do have another question for Ms. O'Hira and, and your client, um. With the quantities that, you know, you provided, it, it's pretty sizable, on average, how long would you, um, expect, um, these batches to, to sit?
Sure, I can, I can answer that, it, it does seem like large quantities. Um, we are, um, having upwards of 100 to 150 guests walk through the door every day and almost all of them get cocktails, the ones that are legally able to do so. Um, so the batches really only do up to two to three bottles and that really would only sit for, um, it, it sits for less than about four days. So it's an all-spirit process. There's no other sugars or juices, anything that is, um, that could be like a biohazard going into there. So it's literally the same as having like an open bottle of rum, whereas like, say the Cunha batch, the Cunha Castaway batch is two bottles of rum that are put together, so it's kind of the same thought process.
So your, your process would be to, um, dispose of all contents in that container and then rebatch a new batch?
Clean it, so the, you would use it to the end, as you would a, a, a bottle of rum, right? Um, you would use it till it was finished and then clean and sanitize the bottles, heat sanitize them, and then make a new batch, but small, so that there wasn't like a bunch just sitting around and waiting.
Okay, but these are stored in, um, the larger cambran containers, right?
These are just gonna be stored into the bottles, um, we find, so when I first put the, the batch together, they were gonna be stored in cambros. Um, I find that the way that we can do it now is just to have it in the bottles ready to go, so there wouldn't be a batch of cambrus sitting around, it would just be in the bottles and we would make them à la manut. So if we ran out of, um, a batch, we would just batch it for the, the three or four bottles that go and then send those bottles and keep them on the back shelf, in the, in the liquor room that's attached to the bar.
Okay, I mean, so step back a bit, um, the, um, what was provided to us said they're gonna be stored in cambran containers, um, if you could, um, kind of explain the bottles that they're gonna be stored in, are they the original bottles or?
They're not the original bottles, no, they're clearly marked, um, 37, or 750, 750 milliliter bottles that are clear, they're claret bottles. I previously used a similar system at Skyway Kiki when I was there. So they're clear claret bottles, clearly marked with the, um, the batch name and the amount of ounces on the front of it to be used.
Okay.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session if there's no other questions.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second to convene into executive session, all those in favor?
Uh, Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion carried, we are now in executive session. We are back on the record, I'm gonna call the agenda item again. Um, agenda item number six, request number 21-22795.
Okay, um, Ms. O'Hira, just to clarify, you folks are asking to, um, pre-batch alcohol only, correct? And not alcohol with any of the perishables listed in Exhibit B?
Correct, Exhibit B was just if you guys wanted to see the full recipe, but what is being mixed is 100% alcohol, or liquor.
Yes, so we're referring to Exhibit A then, is what you're asking to pre-mix, okay. Alright, I'm hearing that, uh, motion to approve request number 21-22795 uh, for a one-year period, um, and, um, strictly, um, uh, limited to what is listed in Exhibit A, if you would like to change any of that, um, it would need to be, uh, pre-approved by the commission. Um, and if you would like to extend past the one-year period, um, we require you to come in before that one-year expiration date.
Second.
Absolutely.
It's been moved in second to approve request number 21-22795 with the verbiage provided by Commissioner Min. All those in favor?
Lee?
Ms. Harai, you're on mute.
I am, yeah, I am. Hold on. Uh, Lee?
Aye.
Min? Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, went into agenda item number seven, request number 21-22783 from Two Dago's LLC DBA Playbar. Mr. Jewitt.
Hello Commissioners.
Hi.
Hear me?
Please identify yourself for the record.
Charles Jewitt, J.E.W.I.T.T., owner of Two Dago's LLC DBA Playbar.
Commissioners, any questions, concerns for the applicant?
Uh, this is for a 90-day extension to submit your gross liquor sales payment?
Yes, it is, correct.
Commissioners, do you have any concerns about that?
Mr. Jewitt, have you been open?
Nope, I have not. Not since, uh, this is Playbar, I've been open, I was open seven days since March 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and is there any reason why you wouldn't be able to submit them earlier than 90 days?
If I get open, I'd be happy to, I mean, I did for Agave and Vine, as soon as I could open, I already, I requested the, the 90 days for all three last time, as soon as I got reopened at Agave and Vine, I paid those. I had also already paid all my fees from last year, which I've been closed the entire time for.
And you, um, accept-
Uh, Mr. Jewitt, I, um-
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr.
Um, I, I would like to recommend, um, we've been, um, getting this request from other licensees as well, and our, um, intention would be to approve 60 days, um, if you're okay with that.
I'm, I'm, uh, on bended knee, so anything right now would definitely help.
Okay, thank you.
Right, um, motion to approve request number 21-22783, uh, for a 60-day extension.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It's been moved in second to approve the rec- approve request number 21-22783 for 60 days. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion is carried, thank you, Mr. Jewitt.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, calling agenda item number eight, request number 21-22784 from Camp Incorporated DBA Republic.
Charles Jewitt, still here, J.E.W.I.T.T., owner of Camp Inc., DBA Republic.
Thank you.
Do you folks expect to reopen the Republic anytime soon?
No. I, we've got, you know, we're a concert venue, they're not even giving us a capacity. We've gone, we went back and forth with, uh, former Mayor Caldwell, uh, with Governor Ege. They won't return calls as to what kind of capacity we can get, until they can give us capacity, we can't be open. I mean, legally, we're 1,000-plus capacity, we should be able to get 500. I told them I didn't feel that was safe. We went and socially distanced everything, I got us about 300, 320, completely safe, everything's supposed to do. And they said, yeah, no. So, at this point, I'm still closed and have been since March 17th.
I'm inclined to offer you a 60-day extension, um, and if you aren't able to meet that, you can come back and ask for another extension. Okay?
Stay on the same thing, say, thank you.
Alright. Uh, motion to approve request number 21-22784 for an additional 60 days.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number 21-22784 for an additional 60 days. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannaban?
I also vote aye, motion is carried, thank you. I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Jewitt.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, calling agenda item number nine, request number 21-22792 from Mr. Nakoba on behalf of Olive Capole LLC.
Oh yes, sir. Due to a conflict, I will have to recuse in this agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, Devon Nakoba here, representing Olive Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Nakoba.
Thank you.
Mr. Nakoba, I have one question. Why?
Why?
Rest.
The request for the information, I'll take both of them actually. The request for the information is because Mr. Espino is the only owner of the Olive Garden franchise here in Hawaii. So he is the only person who's doing the personal history, who's doing the criminal background. And we have the information, the Olive Garden that we have just opened, so all of the details are still on file. With regards to utilizing the, getting the temp, the Sura location at Capole is currently closed. It's been closed for longer than five days. And so with the reopening there, they had a liquor license for a restaurant already. So we felt like this would be the quickest way to get the restaurant up and going, because they'd like to get open, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Nakoba, you can attest that Mr. Espino has not committed any felonies since the last time he provided his personal history and affidavit?
No, he has actually not left the Olive, which is unusual for him. So he has not had a chance to do anything. He's stuck like the rest of us.
Not, no felonies in Honolulu, correct?
No, not at all. Sorry, sorry. Not at all.
Have to leave to do that?
I know, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to make the clarification. Sorry, I completely forgot about the appointment. No, he hasn't left and he hasn't done anything. No.
Thank you. All right. Motion to approve request number 21-22792.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number 21-22792. All those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Nakoba.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get Commissioner Lee back, please?
Chair, motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items 10, 11, and 12.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the adoption of decision and order for agendas 10 through 12. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion is carried. Okay, we're going into adjudication hearings, calling agenda item number 13, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Choi. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ms. O'Hara, Deputy Corporation Counsel Monica Choi on the record for the prosecution in agenda items number 13 through 20.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. I'll call agenda item number 13, Club Little Saigon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of Commission Keituchi for the licensee. I would ask that this matter be continued till the end of March. We've been continued, we continue this from December because the manager who can probably best explain what happened that evening is out of the state and will remain out of the state until the end of March.
I have no objection. The last Thursday in March is March 25th. So if we could continue it to that date, that would be
And, and just so the Commission knows, this is not going to be a contested hearing. It's more for to enter the plea and have the manager explain what happened.
Okay, thank you. Before I make my motion, Mr. Keituchi, regardless of where your client is physically present, he or she can attend via video conference as an option. If you could help facilitate that so we don't continue again?
Yeah, I understand that, except my understanding is the client is in the Far East.
If you can, that's just
No, I understand. And where I can, I will certainly do that, Commissioner. Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item 13 until March 25, 2021.
Thank you. Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number 13 to March 25, 2021. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number 14, Takumi.
This licensee is represented by Wayne Lu, and he just was retained and he asked for continues to March 4, 2021. I don't have any objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item 14 until March 4, 2021.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number 14 to March 4, 2021. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Aye. Motion carried. Agenda item number 15, Platinum Lounge.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of Commission Keituchi for the licensee. I would ask this matter be continued for two weeks so I can speak to both manager and the owner, who just got the discovery. I don't intend to contest this matter because this is a after-hours violation, which I view a little different, so it has to be continued for two weeks.
I have no objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item 15 for two weeks.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number 15 for two weeks. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keituchi. Calling agenda item number 16, Chicken Factory.
Hello?
Can you state your name, or can you both state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Benjamin Lee, B E N J A M I N, last name L E E. And representing N G Chin, or her Korean name is S U J E O N G S I N.
Ms. Choi.
Mr. Lee and Ms. Sin, honor about October 31, 19, I mean, 2019, and during the period from October 31, 2019 to November 4, 2019, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of Rule 3-82-38.8 of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mr. Lee or Ms. Sin, how do you wish to plead?
For no contest.
Thank you. Motion to accept no contest, please.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number 16. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried.
This is a, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Ms. Choi, what's your recommendation?
This is a first-time violation. I mean, this instance, the employee annual list was submitted four days late. It was due October 31, 2019. It was submitted on November 4, 2019. My recommended fine is $250.
Thank you. Mr. Lee or Ms. Sin, do you have any comments or explanation?
Not for this one.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250 for agenda item 16.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of $250 for agenda item 16. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro. Ganabon.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Okay, moving on to agenda item 17, Chicken Factory. Mr. Lee, for the record, please identify yourself for this agenda item again.
Yes, Benjamin Lee. B E N J A M I N, last name L E E.
And also, can you state the record of your, of Ms. Sin?
Oh, Triple H Enter-Tech Enterprise Inc., DBA Chicken Factory.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe I missed, I misheard you. I thought you didn't say Ms. Sin's name. Um, I'm just gonna read the charge.
Oh, okay.
One second, Ms. Choi. Mr. Lee, if you could identify Ms. Sin again for the record?
Sure. S U J E O N G, last name S I N.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. If you could read the charge, please?
Honor about November 19, 2020, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter to it the emergency order 2020-29 COVID-19 novel coronavirus Honolulu COVID-19 recovery framework order implemented tier two dated October 202020 in violation of section 281-38 of the Hawaii Revise Statute.
Mr. Lee or Ms. Sin, how do you wish to plead?
Uh, can I just translate?
Oh yes, please.
Yeah. Also, no contest for this.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number 17. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye. Motion has been carried.
Ms. Choi, your recommendation, please?
This is a first-time violation of the mayor's order. In this instance, there were plastic cups of alcohol found in front of patrons past 10:00 PM. My recommended fine is $500 plus an additional $420 because the the alcohol was found on premises at 10:42 PM. So that is calculated by $10 per every minute after 10:00 PM. So the total fine is $920.
Sorry, 920 or 9, I thought I heard you say
520, yeah, 500 plus 420 dollars.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee or Ms. Sin, do you want to provide any comments or explanation?
Yeah, so we took out all the cups for alcohol. But as our waiter couldn't see because I think the customer was the plastic cup was behind the bone container. So I mean, I still have no contest for this, but this is just explaining about the situation.
I understand. So what I'm hearing is that the customer was concealing the plastic cup?
Behind the container, yeah.
Okay. And you understand you have an obligation to essentially police your establishment to make sure that all the alcohol is collected prior to the, at least at this time, the 10 o'clock?
Yes, if he, if he knew, we could have just took him out. There was only one team, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $920 for agenda item 17.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of $920 for agenda item number 17. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, going on to agenda item number 18, TJ Sports Bar and Grill. Hello?
Hi.
Now, you can identify yourself for the record.
Ken Hovian, owner of TJ Sports Bar.
Ms. Choi, your last name?
My last name is spelled H O V S N Victor A N I A N.
Thank you. Ms. Choi?
Mr. Hovian, in honor during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of Rule 3-81-17.56 of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Uh, which year was that one for? I'm sorry.
Fiscal year 2019.
Yeah, okay. Pleading no contest on that. That was before we owned the bar.
Okay, hold on one second. And Ms. Choi, could you also recharge number two?
Oh, no, this one is just one charge for this licensee number, I mean, this licensee violation number. I think we're looking at maybe the next file, which has two charges.
Are we on agenda 19?
No.
We're 18.
18.
Okay, I got ahead of myself, so sorry.
We're number, yeah, 18.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, Mr. Hovian, or can you pronounce it?
Hovian.
Hovian. I heard you earlier say no contest to this charge?
Yeah, that was the previous management.
Okay, thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item 18.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number 18. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Choi?
Yes, this is a first-time violation. This violation is occurred during the time that the prior owner was maintaining the records for the business. And the prior owner transferred it to their current owner sometime in March of 2020. The problem here was that the prior owner did not maintain the credit card sales, so it was difficult to determine the accuracy of their gross liquor sales.
Okay, and has, have those gross liquor sales been submitted to the commission since then?
I mean, the report has been submitted, but during the audit, we found that it was, the records were not maintained properly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hovian, you wanna provide your comment or explanation?
Yeah, the previous owner, total lack of management. Our establishment is run entirely different. We have a state-of-the-art POS system. You can track everything. So, yeah, you won't be having those problems going forward.
Okay, I appreciate that. Motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item 18.
Second.
It moved in second to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number 18. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number 19, TJ Sports Bar and Grill. Mr. Hovian, please identify yourself for agenda item number 19 for the record.
Ken Hovian, owner of TJ Sports Bar and Grill.
Ms. Choi, could you read both of the charges, please?
Yes. Honor charge one. Yeah, honor charge one, honor about September nine, twenty nineteen, and or during the period between September nine, twenty nineteen. And September sixteen, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee without commission approval transferred to another entity that licensee's business. For which the licensee's license was issued either openly or under any undisclosed arrangement. Whereby such other person came into possession or control of the business or took in any partner and associate in violation of. Section two eighty-one dash forty-one H of the Hawaii Revised Statutes. Charge number two, honor about October seventeen, twenty nineteen, and or during the period between September sixteen, twenty nineteen. And October seventeen, twenty nineteen. In the city and county of Honolulu, Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to obtain approval from the commission in writing prior to any change in ownership of twenty-five percent or more of the stock. Where change in ownership resulting in the transfer becoming the owner of twenty-five percent or more of the outstanding stock. In violation of section two eighty-one dash forty-one I of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
Mr. Hovanian, how do you wish to plead to charge number one?
I'm contesting that.
Okay, and how do you wish to plead to charge number two?
Uh, yeah, contesting that as well. This is the paperwork issue, correct? Uh, the paperwork has since been submitted.
I.
Okay, um, go ahead, Ms. Choi.
Uh, we're, uh, the currently, the liquor prosecutors are scheduling the. Contested matters in order, so I would like to continue this for contested hearing to the next available date.
Okay, and Mr. Hovanian, just let you know, we're gonna set this for a contested hearing at a later date. Um, we have other matters that are ahead of this one, so you would have to return to um present evidence or. Testimony why these charges um should not be enforced against uh your company, okay? So my motion is to continue agenda item nineteen for contested hearing on both. Charges one and two for the next available hearing date.
Second.
I have one uh matter just to raise. I know Mr. Hovanian said that he wanted to do an in-person hearing, but. Um, I don't know when that is possible. Do you want to address that later? Um, when we actually schedule this hearing? Because right now, I think we're doing everything via Zoom and um even the court.
Correct.
In uh most of our proceedings. Via video tele- uh video conferencing.
Okay, uh, thank you for um raising the issue. Mr. Hovanian, right now, the commission has not heard contested matters for about a year. As we resume next week or thereafter, we are gonna hold these hearings by Zoom video conference. Should that change and your matter has not been called yet, we can provide the in-person opportunity. But for current planning purposes, you need to plan to present your case via. Video conference, and you can work with administration to coordinate efforts in that regard, okay?
Okay, I, for this uh. Particular case, uh, I I think that would be okay, but the the next one that is on the agenda. I would really uh feel that it would be in my benefit to contest it in person.
Okay, well, I'm taking that under consideration, but we are weighing the current emergency orders in effect.
Understood.
With the uh space restrictions that are necessary for us to act as a commission. But we can reach that issue um once it's scheduled and go from there.
Okay, understood.
In any event, there was a motion, and I believe I heard Commissioner Adley second the motion.
Um, it's been, it's been moved in second to um. Continue agenda item number nineteen for charges one and two to the next available date for a contested hearing. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty, TJ Sports Bar and Grill. Mr. Hovanian, you can be, um. Identify yourself for this agenda item as well.
Ken Hovanian, owner of TJ Sports Bar and Grill.
Mr. Hovanian.
Choi.
Thank you, honor about November twenty, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license. Or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To it, Honolulu COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two dated October twenty twenty twenty. In violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of Hawaii Revised Statutes.
Mr. Hovanian, how do you wish to plead?
Contesting.
Okay, thank you, um, motion to continue agenda item twenty to the next available hearing date for a contested hearing.
Second.
They moved in second to to continue agenda item number twenty. Uh, to schedule for a contested hearing for the next available date. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion has been carried. Thank you, Mr. Hovanian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number twenty-one, any legislative update?
Um, I have nothing further to add, uh, other than what was reported in the the weekly report. We just got one bill coming up for hearing on uh tomorrow, even though we are tracking a ton of them. But just basically two bills we're focusing on, one will come up for hearing uh tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Chari. Uh, let's call agenda item number twenty-two, any liquor administrator issues or matters?
Nothing from me.
Okay, hearing done, then um. Meeting adjourned?